Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Ridgecrest City Council Candidate Forum. I am Chris Hill, Board Member with the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce. This is the first of two public service candidate forums being presented by the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce, the Ridgecrest Area Association of Realtors, and the Indian Wells Valley Economic Development Corporation. We thank the City of Ridgecrest for making this venue available for these important forums. As we begin, I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand, place their right hand over their heart, and begin after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In addition to myself moderating this evening, I would like to introduce Sarah Rizardini, President of the Ridgecrest Area Association of Realtors, and Scott O'Neil, Executive Director of the IWV Economic Development Corporation. At this time, I want to welcome our candidates for Ridgecrest City Council: Tom Witnick, Solomon Rajaratnam, and Kyle Blades. I welcome our community here in council chambers and viewing online, and a special thank you to those who have submitted questions for consideration. Questions may or may not be the same for the two forums this evening. We'd like to start by reviewing the rules for this event, which is being streamed live to the public. It is also being recorded so it can be viewed later via YouTube at the Ridgecrest -- City of Ridgecrest YouTube channel. Our goal in sponsoring this forum is to give you, the people, a chance to -- well, you as the candidates, a chance to share with the public some information about yourself, your motivations, and your views. It is also to give us, as representatives of our community, a chance to ask you some important questions. In preparation, we have sought such questions from our community. The questions we will ask are created from these submissions. Each of you will be given a chance to respond to each question asked. Initially, each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. Here, we hope you will tell us about yourself, your qualifications, your motivations for running, and, if elected, any ideas you will bring to the post. After these introductions, we will move to the questions and answers session. The questions being addressed will be posted on the screen for you and the public's reference. Each candidate will be given dedicated time to respond to each question asked. The amount of time allotted will be announced following each question. To be fair, each candidate will be -- will have the opportunity to be first in responding to each question. We anticipate asking four questions. We expect each of you to be cordial, respectful, and well-mannered in your responses. If you choose to target a particular candidate, after you complete your response, we will give that candidate 30 seconds to rebut. Following the questions, each candidate will be given two minutes to share any final thoughts or reasons why the public should vote for you. The timer on the wall will also be running as a reference for you. It will sound an alarm when your time is up, so when you hear the alarm, please conclude your response. I'd like to first introduce our candidates and allow them those two minutes. We will start with Mr. Tom Witnick.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to get my word out to anybody or everybody. First of all, I'd like to just make sure that everybody knows my qualifications and the fact that I've been in Ridgecrest for a long time, a long time. I came here for a year with the Navy, oh, 40 years ago, and I'm still here. And I think a lot of people have that story. I have my wife Shannon, and I have daughter, grandkids, and great-grandkids, all waiting for me to do what I'm supposed to do and do it right. And that's what I hope I do tonight, and I hope I do this right. Anyway, I'm a -- I have a lot of background. I'm a -- have a business owner here in Ridgecrest. I've got three businesses. They're not full-time businesses except one. I've got one full-time business, the other two are part-time. I've been Vice Mayor before and a Councilmember before, not recently though. I'm a president of the nonprofit organization Ridgecrest Gun Range. I'm a former program manager and contract manager for the base. I hold -- held dual certifications in contract and program management on the base. I retired from the base in 2005. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, served 69 to 72 active duty. Right now, I want to make sure that everybody understands that my importance in what I would like to have Ridgecrest do and go, the direction I'd like to go, is, first of all, I want to make sure everybody understands that there's a lot of talk about things going as far as like Measure V. I want to go on the record to say, whether it passes or not, if I'm elected, I will commit that there will be no cuts to the police department. We might have to make some tough choices when we do that, but there will be no cuts to officers or the police department if I'm elected. Of course, I'm only one vote in that area if I was -- get elected. I'd like to make sure that we have the council go another direction, and I hope the direction is that we get more transparency and more openness of the city council, which we -- I don't think we have anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rajaratnam, your two minutes.
Thank you. I want to say I'm humbled and honored to serve on Ridgecrest City Council for the past four years. Thank God for giving me that opportunity, and I wholeheartedly thank this community for overwhelmingly supporting me and voting me into the city council when I ran for election in 2020. Thank you very much. I lived -- we lived in Ridgecrest for the past 25 years, and I've been involved in so many community service organizations, and that has given me in-depth knowledge of this community and what the needs and requirements of this community are. I strongly support China Lake Base and its sustainability, at the same time strongly support Ridgecrest's growth as well as her quality of life. During the past 25 years, I've been on the chamber board. I was chairman of the chamber for one term. I was a rotarian and director of youth services. I was on the San Jacinto Community College Foundation Board and chaired that board for one term on planning commission for six years and four years as incumbent city council member. I want to thank my wife for letting me serve this community during the past four years and also letting me run for this term. Thank you very much. We have two children, Marilyn and James. They both graduated from Emmanuel Christian School. I used to coach them in their speech competitions. One of the speeches I was coaching was John F. Kennedy's speech, and one quote from that speech stuck with me. He said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country." So from that time onwards, I have taken that as my motto and served this community with wholehearted sacrifice as well as commitment. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Blades, your two minutes.
Yes, it was odd not to have you give a benediction, Solomon, at the end, as soon as we got done with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I want to thank you guys, the hosts especially, IWV EDC, Ridgecrest Realtors Chamber. It's huge. The public needs this forum. It's important to the public, and I appreciate the service you guys provide there. For anybody in the public who does not know me, my name is Kyle Blades. I have been on the council for the last term, and it's been -- it's been my honor. It's been a privilege. I see that service on the council as a duty. There is so many other groups and programs out in the public where people are serving their community, and I think this is one more way that you can serve in this capacity. I've been in this valley most of my life. If I wasn't here in Ridgecrest, I was in the service. I spent -- I signed up for four, ended up doing five and a half. I was back when they were still stop-lossing people. And I'm glad that I did it. I'm proud to have done it. Came back to Ridgecrest to make a life, make a home. That's what Ridgecrest is to me. It isn't a place to stop over. It isn't a place that I'll be for three years so I can get to the next. And I think that far too often, it's easy to think of Ridgecrest as a place to springboard from. This is a place that I love, and I'm proud to make it my home. The direction that I hope to see us go as a community, it summed up pretty easily by simply talking about quality of life. Quality of life encompasses so many things, but the direction of this council currently and the direction I would hope it stays on track with is to increase the quality of life here in Ridgecrest and make it a place that people want to belong.
Thank you. Let's jump into the first question. We'll start with Councilman Rajaratnam. In your opinion, what are the top three quality-of-life issues in Ridgecrest, and how will you address them? You will each have three minutes to respond, and Mr. Rajaratnam, your time starts now.
Quality of life issues. Quality of life is very important for our recruitment and retention of base employment. The top three, I would say, is infrastructure, parks and recreation, as well as public safety. These three are very important for me. Quality of life brings people into this community as well as businesses into this community. And we have seen the infrastructure. Measure V has immensely helped us to improve the infrastructure over the past four years. Same way, Measure V has helped police department to increase the public safety and get involved in the community and develop that rapport with the community. And the third is quality-of-life factor, I think, is parks and recreation as well as our sports complexes. You can see there is -- there has been tremendous improvement in the parks and recreation as well as our -- as well as our sports complexes. So we were able to do this because of Measure V. Measure V supports 43% of the police department, and Measure V supports 61% of our -- I'm sorry, public works streets. So we were able to improve the quality of life because of the funds we have from Measure V. Measure V brings in around 34% of the tax dollars to our community. So it is very important to have Measure V to improve our quality of life. In addition to that, there was -- during COVID time, we received some funds from ARPA. So those funds were used to improve quality of life in Ridgecrest. So that is a blessing in disguise at that time. And our city staff are always looking for grants for improvement of roads as well as parks and recreation and for improvement in police department. Because of Measure V, police department last year was able to buy animal control vehicle, and that improves the quality of life. And because of Measure V, till now, 70% of the -- our outdated roads were rehabilitated. That's a great achievement, and we hope to complete 99% rehabilitation by the end of 2030. So these factors, when fulfilled, would improve the quality of life and attract more businesses, more employment in Ridgecrest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Blades, your three minutes.
Yep, Solomon, thorough as always.
Thank you.
Top three: parks and rec -- that's -- and I'll just list them out. Parks and rec, roads, which means infrastructure, and police. And I think all of those tie back to quality of life real, real well. One thing that I've seen at least this current council do, and I know -- and I think it's been needed and done for a long time, is get out of the way of the city staff. And I think that could be said in any workplace. A lot of times, leadership can be either too domineering, too controlling, or not enough, not enough direction. And I think given direction, the city staff's been able to move out and accomplish an immense amount of work. And I mean, that is solidly true for the roads. We've seen a lot of work. I think it's important to say, especially in this forum, the concentration, the mass amount of work that's being done on the roads right now will always be done, but that means you let your city staff figure out how to stretch those dollars. And I'm proud to see as many roads that have been done have. Parks and rec, our city staff has been able to grow some of those programs, improve the parks drastically. Sorry, Chris, I just keep looking at you because you're right here. I try not to stare at you so much. And the police department. It's been my privilege to jump in the car a few times and go on ride-alongs, to see what the police deal with every day. The job that they have is immense, and they do deserve and get it a strong amount of support from our public. It's -- I think I was actually right along with you, Detective Stengel, and some of the stuff that I saw them deal with, I don't know if I could deal with it every day. The reason I bring that up is that the stuff that they're addressing keeps the rest of us happy. They keep the property values up, whether we think about it like that or not. There's an old saying, right? A broken window drives property values down. We have a police department that is responding quickly, that is all over everything we could ask them to be over. And I think as long as we have our continued support behind the PD, we're going to maintain that level of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Witnick, your three minutes.
Thank you. Quality of life. Well, first of all, the question is, what are your top three quality-of-life issues? First thing I want to interject in that is that the first three items should be used as input from the people, represent the people, what they think are the quality-of-life issues we should address. And we should involve the public more often in determining which of these issues that we should address. And I believe in involving the people more. Instead of me trying to decide for you, you help me make the decision because I'm ready to listen to the people on the top issues. Some things that are concerning me is, of course, I'm glad to hear that the Navy is helping with Ridgecrest Regional Hospital and expanding their services. I think that is a fantastic thing for the City of Ridgecrest to have that availability. And as a councilman, I would try and do -- have the city do as much as we can to help in that area as well. For me, public safety is number one. If we're not safe, we're not safe. It's not a quality-of-life issue. It is not a good life. And we do have crime out there, but we have a police department that is handling that crime very well, and we need to make sure that keeps up. The other thing I think we need to do is -- an issue that affects all of us is water. We have so many different things going on with the GA, the Groundwater Authority, and the city, it needs to make more of an effort to be more involved in that decision and how they operate within the GA. I don't think that the city is doing enough to help the direction that the GA is going. We have a representative on the GA, which is one of the council people, but I think we can do more. The city could have town hall meetings and get more input from the people because now that we see that there's two different types of -- or two different studies now that are conflicting again, and we've had conflicting studies on the water here for as long as I can remember. But now the argument between the 7,000 acre feet versus 14,000 acre feet is recharging levels, both quality studies, we need to work those out now. If there's issues like that, they need to be worked out. And I think the Water District should be a major player in this. I believe our county supervisor should be a major player in it, and he needs to get more involved with the city and the GA because without water, we go nowhere if that's the answer. There's a lot of people saying that there's some discrepancy in what the answer should be. And by building a pipeline that will call all of us $3,000 a year to pay for, how many people are going to want to come to Ridgecrest? How many people would want to start a business if they hear a bill like that coming? There's got to be a good solution. There's got to be a better solution than what we're talking about right now, and the city should be a major role player in making that decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, question number two. It's going to be about water. Okay?
Knew it was coming.
Okay, so water is a critical and controversial issue in our community. Please summarize the problem as you see it, and then tell us whether you agree with the groundwater sustainability plan or not, and be specific why. And how do you intend to create more understanding in the community, unity in the way forward, and harmony between the factions? You'll each have five minutes to answer this -- to respond to this question, and we'll start off with Councilman Blades.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. So the GSP, I'll start with that. The good thing about the groundwater support plan, sustainability plan, is that it's a living document, and as data is collected, and every couple of years, it's supposed to be updated, and from what I've seen, that's being attempted. There is a lot of confusion out in the public, and the best thing that I can say, the very best thing that I can say is, please attend meetings. Please watch the meetings. Get ahold of theirs. The Groundwater Authority is made up -- is a joint powers made up of elected representatives all over this valley. The basin is large and expands quite a ways. All of those elected leaders are beholden to us, county, the city. And if -- to better understand, there is years and years and years of YouTube meetings you could go watch. I don't -- I know that that's not always what somebody wants to hear, but there is a lot of information sitting out there to -- the situation is not so complex that it cannot be fixed, but it is complex enough that a single five-minute summary is not going to do it justice. So here's what I will say. The direction of the GSP makes sense at this time because that's the best data that we have available in our hands. That is what I would hope that any elected leader sitting up on this dais or anywhere else would do. They gather the best data that they can, they move forward and move out on that data. There has been a lot of, over the least, especially over the last couple of years, it goes back and forth, there's been a lot of attempts to improve relationships between the various folks. A lot of times lawyers and lawsuits are in the way. That's a problem, but I think as long as we maintain decorum and we're cordial to each other, that's what's important. Because at the end of all of this strife, we're all going to have to work together again. We're all going to end up living in the same community. And those things, we don't want to cut so deep that the wounds don't heal, and that's important. But it is important that we move out and we work on the GSP as it's stated. Imported water is what's on the plan right now. Every other solution that I have looked into, been briefed on, discussed at length over the last few years, right now, the pipeline seems to be the most feasible. If something else comes up better, I would love to hear it. I want to know about it. I'd love to have that information, but I don't have that. I think that's good.
Thank you, Councilman Blades. Next will be Mr. Witnick.
Okay, thank you. So I'll continue on with what I was saying earlier about the water and the water issue with the GA. Yes, we need to keep moving on that. We have to find a plan that will be financially possible to be done, not impossible to be done. One thing is that when they talk about a pipeline coming in here, the cost of it is just through the roof. And I don't know who anybody could even conceivably understand the cost of putting this pipeline into Ridgecrest. They have this other thing that they do is they can buy and bank water somewhere else in the state that we can maybe draw on later. Well, as far as I know, nobody's ever drawn on that water or even tried to or even have come up with a way that we would be able to draw on that water if we're putting it in the bank by buying it for $2 million or whatever it is. We need to, again, have the people more involved. And I don't want to repeat myself because I want to bring it up this way. The GA meets in the afternoon during the day when virtually none of you can be there. How do you make comment to a meeting you can't get to? Okay, somebody will say, "Well, you can watch it on TV. It is televised." Okay, so what? Big deal. All right? The point is, is that they should make themselves more available to the people, and they're not doing that. The City of Ridgecrest, like I said again earlier, should be more of a major player. And here's one thing that I think the council needs to change, and I've suggested this and I've been ignored. Okay, right now, our representative that goes on to the GA to vote and make decisions for the city is one person, and I don't have any problem with the person that is doing it, so this is not a personal thing in any way. But our representative can go over there, "Are you ready for this?" When they leave the city council chambers, they can vote any way they want, whether it agrees with the -- whether the city council agrees with it or doesn't agree with it. That person can go and vote any way they want, period, without any kind of recourse. I think that should be changed by the city, that our representative should have some answerability to the city council and then you, the voters of Ridgecrest. And by that, I mean change the way it's done. The way it's done is that -- or the way we can fix it is this. We can say and have a policy adopted that, yes, this representative can go there and make decisions without approval from the city council, only under certain circumstances. Kind of just mundane administrative things, it's no problem with that person going over there and making decisions. But if there's a major decision that needs to be made, if it's something where all the people are going to wind up having to spend a lot of money or affect people whether they can build or not build, or what business can come here or not come here, that needs to come back to the council so that they can get input from you, the people, in the evening when you can come down here and address the council and make your ideas known to the council. Then the council would then, under this particular circumstance, tell the rep that goes there, "We want you to vote yes or no," or whatever it might be. That can be done. It can be done. It's legal, and there's no problem. We can get that done. That way, our representative is representing, truly representing, Ridgecrest people. And a lot of those people are Water District people that we also represent. So we give Water District people another chance to come in, to not just go to the Water District and go to their meetings, but to come here in Ridgecrest, in City Hall, and listen here. That is a change that people -- some people don't like that idea, but I say, why not? Why not have our representative actually take a decision from the city council in the direction that the whole city thinks we should go, not just when that person gets over there, they make a decision? It is important to all of us to understand what's going on, so when we discuss it at the city level, we should get more definition on what the actual items are. It is on the agenda, but it's usually a very quick, simple summary that we get from our representative. And they never put it out there in public that, "Well, we have an important issue coming up, so here's the issue, and here we would like to get public input." That's not done. How can the people know that they can come down to City Hall and voice their concerns or ideas when they don't know they have that availability to do that to the city council? Again, openness, transparency, involve the people. That is what's important.
GSP was submitted by GA in 2000, and that has been approved by the state. So with that approval of the GSP, the ship is set to sail, the clock is ticking. So the GA had to take action immediately on approval. The GA called -- the GSP called for having imported water pipeline, so we have to go by that because that's the only way, only avenue the state has approved. But the GSP is an evolving document. GSP clearly said that while working on imported water pipeline, you need to look into other feasible alternatives. Otherwise, you will not be able to achieve sustainability of water in Indian Wells Valley basin. And the GSP also, the staff of GSP, the staff of Groundwater Resources, they pointed out some critical issues that needs to be resolved, and they recommended that these critical items should be resolved before the next review of the GSP, and which is -- GSP is reviewed every five years, so our review is due by December 31st, 2025. every five years, so our review is due by December 31st, 2025. GSP is not designed to totally eliminate the overdraft. So in view of the problems with the financing of water pipeline and other project elements, the Department of Water Resources said you have to look for other alternatives. So that's one thing I want to look into. We, I'll be working on imported water pipeline to make sure we are time-bound on that, but at the same time, I'll be looking into other resources if anything is available. Any small amount of water is very important for us, which, which is in critical overdraft. So we need to look into conservation, we need to look into stormwater capture, we need to look into desalination of ocean water, we need to look into reclaimed water, and any other source. Some people said there is some water in the southwest quadrant. I don't know if we have tested that by drilling some test pumps. I'm not an expert on water, so I don't know if that was done and looked into. But water is always a complex issue in Ridgecrest. How are we going to finance this pipeline? How are we going to finance purchase of water? We went with replacement fee of $2,130, of which $2,112 will be going towards purchase of water. But I don't know if that water has been purchased, any, any amount of water has been purchased as of now. And if we need to build the pipeline, where are we going to get the funds? I know CT is working on to get some grants. If those grants materialize, that's great, so we need to, we can go ahead and look into that avenue. But one thing I want to say is, there is no concerted effort between GA and Water District. I want to see that GA and Water District sit at the table and talk the issues over. The GSP clearly said, it called for open collaborative process with active diverse stakeholder engagement. So I don't see that happening, so I want to see that engagement by the all active stakeholders take place. Otherwise, then we will be always on the menu of other person. So there is, we don't see light at the end of the tunnel. So I want to make an effort to bring GA and Water District to come together and sit and talk, and make sure we have common goal and the avenues of how we can achieve sustainability of water. And I also want to make sure we support the sustainability of the base. Our actions should not come in the way of base military installation unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Raj Rautan.
Okay, next question. There are two ballot measures this year. What is your position on Measure AA and Measure V and Y? You will each have three minutes to respond, and we'll start with Mr. Witnick.
Thank you. Measure AA for the school district, this is another attempt from the school district to get another bond measure out there to try and make improvements to the schools. And you know what? When these, when it comes to these measures, one of the things that's most important to me is that it does give a chance for the people to voice their opinion on these things, and maybe have a discussion. And maybe it would be good if the Measure A people would have a similar hearing to like we're having tonight, to just discuss Measure A with people out in the audience. Or Measure V, have another similar to event that we're having here tonight, to listen to the people, to see what they say. Now with Measure AA, again, I'm going to go with the people. What, what do they vote for? And if they vote for it, that's it, all right? Measure V, now this one gets more complicated, all right? Because Measure V gets complicated because the first two versions of it had a sunset clause. The current one doesn't. And what that means is this, that without a sunset clause, that it is a permanent tax. Permanent tax means that it goes on forever unless it's ever taken back by the city council or by the people. And this is where it really gets, I get a real laugh out of people that are saying, oh, it's really easy to stop Measure V with an initiative from the people. Well, let me tell you this, as the only person sitting up here or in this room that has actually done an initiative to put it on the ballot, I've done it. It is not easy to get a ballot initiative by the people onto the ballot. I spent hours and months and all kinds of time and money, private money, to get initiative on the ballot. That did, actually, two initiatives that did pass. And it was not easy, hiring legal staff, spending all that money, standing in front of Walmart during the heat of summer, getting signatures, and you know what? Getting signatures, they, they're on Facebook, oh, it's real easy. No, it's not. Because if you need 2,000 signatures to qualify an initiative, guess how many signatures you got to get to get it to 2,000? 3,000! Because there's so many that are thrown out. When the, when the petitions go over to Kern County, and they start going through the signatures to see what's right, registered voter, duplicates, not, don't even live here, that type of thing, and they start throwing out these signatures, and all of a sudden, you're getting down and down and down. And I mean it, 3,000 signatures to get 2,000 to qualify it. And I will go along with saying this, is that the first time I tried to bound, to get the initiative on the ballot, I was 11 signatures short. And when I came back to the city council and asked them, and the county said that I could come to the city council and ask them to just extend it for 30 days to allow me to get 30, 30 more signatures, they said no, I mean 11 signatures, they said no. So it is not easy to stop something with an initiative on the ballot.
I support both Measure AA as well as Measure V. Measure AA is a school bond. The money being raised will be utilized for the old buildings, school buildings we have, that's, again, goes back to the quality of life. When somebody wants to move to Ridgecrest, they, they will see whether they have, if it is a young family having children, they will see if the city has good schools, good buildings, so that they can have safe environment. So Measure V is going to bring in, expected to bring in around 40 million. I, I guess 40 million. So out of that, 20 million would bring in additional 100 million from the federal grants. So this amount would be used exclusively for repair, making repairs, as well as building a new facility for school district. So I wholeheartedly support that measure. And Measure V, I, I talked about Measure V earlier. Measure V is a, the continuity of Measure V is very important for Ridgecrest. Otherwise, we, the hard work which we have done during the few years, like the infrastructure, police, public safety, so those, those areas would be affected if Measure V is not passed. So we need to make sure that Measure V is passed so that we can continue to do, and we continue, we continue to build on the work which we have already done, so that we can make Ridgecrest a better place to live, and attract more businesses into town, and attract more employees onto the base. So I strongly support Measure V. As I mentioned earlier, Measure V brings in 34% of the tax dollars for our city. And Measure V supports 43% of police department expenses, and it supports 61% of Public Works Streets Department. So with this money, we were able to achieve so many things. We were able to rehabilitate our age-old roads to the extent of 75%. And with the continuity of Measure V, we would be able to complete rehabilitation by 2013. And then we need to continue maintaining these roads and make sure these roads are not, don't get into a bad shape again. Same way, Measure V supported 18 police officers positions under the police department. So that is very important for us to continue so that the police department have these public safety officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blades?
Yes. So Measure AA, after reading into it and having some discussions with, with people who know more than I do, seems like it makes a whole lot of sense. It's a, it's a direct investment back in the children of this community, it's a direct investment into the infrastructure. Infrastructure, I could, I could drone on for a long time, I often do during council meetings right now, and I'm having a time limit that's different for me. So we, it's important. There is far too many schools right now that are in a state of disrepair. They're in a place that, that, it's embarrassing, and I won't state it any other way. I know that sounds like strong, strong words, but there are some of our schools at a point where they shouldn't be. The bond going out there to, to match federal, to get federal dollars makes a whole lot of sense to me, so I support Measure AA. Measure V is another one that makes a whole lot of sense. As Solomon, Mr. Raj Rautan pointed out, it's well over 30% of our budget. 30% of our budget that we have a city staff that are always planning towards building, building future plans off of. And since 2012, the public's been pretty clear that they, that they want that, that they want Measure V, it was Measure L, turned into V, have been pretty clear that it's, it's vital to the community. It's, it just makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just, real quick, we've received comments online that it's a little hard to hear some, so if you can just speak up and speak directly into the mic. Thank you.
Okay, the fourth question. What do you see as the current challenges facing our city, and how will you address them? We'll start off with Councilman Raj Rautan.
When...
By the way, you have three minutes.
When we took office, the city was reeling under twin earthquakes of 2019, and then it rolled over into COVID-19 between 2020 and 2022. That was a double whammy, and then city was struggling financially at that time, the businesses were struggling, and we were trying to get out of that by circumventing the problems. And then came the Hurricane Hillary, that's another setback for us, but we have navigated through these challenges successfully. And the city council, existing city council works together very well, so we could focus on what needs to be done, and went in that direction to make sure these challenges were met. So in the future, the challenges that would be met is, if Measure V is not passed, what are we going to do? That's a big challenge. So we need to figure out what steps we need to take if Measure V didn't, does not pass. I hope it passes. And the other challenge I see in our community is bringing unity between different groups. This has started with Casino, and it has split our community during that time, and water again has split our communities. So I hate to see that happen because ours is a small community, we see each other at least once a week in a grocery store or somewhere else. So I personally feel very bad, I mean, talking to different people, because we don't agree on this issue. So I want to make sure we are united as far as water is concerned in the future, and that way we can resolve this issue and address this issue together. So these are the two challenges I think of right now, so yeah, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Raj Rautan. Next, Kyle Blades, Councilman Blades?
Yeah, Kyle's, Kyle's fine, too. Economic development, economic development ties right back into quality of life, and recruitment and retention for that base is huge. It's a, it's, it's been an ongoing task sitting on this dais since people, since the city was incorporated. Let's figure out how we improve quality of life, let's figure out how we keep more people here for recruitment and retention, and I think that's one of our major issues. We do that through economic development, through, through the city, taking part, being a part of, of events, encouraging and empowering other groups, such as RECVB, the chamber. There's a lot of events that get put on that benefit this community enormously. Stuff like the Petricha Cliff Festival coming up, the fairgrounds, the, you know, the rodeo stuff that happens there. All of these things tie into quality of life, and all of them tie in just a small, small piece of the economic development. Having a good building department, good infrastructure, those things, you know, tie into when people do want to come here. Dealing with our staff, how easy are they to deal with? Are they knowledgeable? Can we get things done? Another issue that the city has had, but I have seen getting better over the last few years, is communication to the public. It's improved dramatically. I mean, it's, it's been an exponential increase in, in a push of information, a steady flow of information out to the public, to let them know what's going on in the community, with the city, as much as possible. And I think that we could always do more, and that will be an ongoing, an ongoing task at our feet. That's good.
Thank you, Councilman Blades. Mr. Witnick, three minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to go back, again, I hate to be repetitive in this, but involving the people. I come down, down to council meetings here, and sometimes there's maybe three or four people in, in the chambers here for a council meeting. I don't think that's appropriate, and I wish more people would get more involved. So when I started this campaign, I said, how can I find out more what the people are thinking, not just what I'm thinking? Because I don't have all the answers, all right? I believe in the people having answers, and I said, how can I find out more what the people are thinking? So I've, I've been watching some polling that's been going on, on, on social media, and this polling has been very surprising in a couple of areas. One is that recently, the city council decided to buy a lot, bare land on Boston Street, and there was some discussion on it, and it was like nobody even knew this was coming up until it showed up on the agenda. Everything was done behind closed doors, negotiating, price set, what we're going to do, what we're not going to do, everything was behind closed doors, until it was finally out here for an affirmation vote from the council. And I did get up and ask a couple of questions about it, and then there was some council discussion about it. But in the openness category, at one point, you know, one of the council people said, we shouldn't even be discussing this in public, we should move on. And I was shocked to hear that, that involving the people is not the right thing to do? And so in a poll, the poll was done, and 78% of the people voted that that land shouldn't be bought. 78%! But the council didn't have the input from you, so they made the decision for you. And they decided, we're going to buy this land that didn't have an appraisal, and spend $65,000 on a lot that's been vacant for 60 years or more, and just bail somebody out of this land. They ask about things like the waste management contract. There's been a poll put out on that. And I'll tell you what, that is the one that got the most, the most reaction from the people in the polling. It was just unbelievable how unhappy people are with the waste management contract that we have right now. And they all want something done. They, all the people see is that the rates went up and we got less service, period. Rates went up and we got less service. One can every week and two cans every other week. And before that, we had two cans every week. I don't know how you figure math, but that's not like a reduction in service to me. And people were livid, they said, how did this happen? And it happened because it's the contract that the city negotiated with Waste Management, and the council approved it, and that's what we have today. How do you change that? Change your representatives.
Thank you, councilmen, or excuse me, candidates. You'll now have two minutes each for your closing comments. You'll, we'll go in reverse order from your, the dais seating, and we'll start with Councilman Blades.
Thank you, Scott. And thank you guys again for hosting. I really do appreciate it, and I think it's important to the community. And thank you, everybody who's in attendance tonight. I'm glad that you're here, I appreciate everybody that's watching. These, these open forums are, you know, they're not happening everywhere, and I'm glad they're happening here. and I'm glad they're happening here. The last thing I wanted to say is that I have appreciated serving, and I look forward to serving for another term. It's been, it's been a great honor and a great duty. The issues that we're elected to fix, they're not always easy. They're often complex, but they can be tackled, and I think that's what you're elected to do, to fix issues. I know anytime that I've ever stepped in the ballot box, when I go to check a block, I'm often thinking about, what can this person get done? Can they get things fixed? That's, that's what I focus on. It's also important to me that we maintain decorum and respect, that we do. So large issues that you've heard mentioned up here, you name them, water, flock, trash, all of them, all of them, maintaining, you know, we had town halls for those, and I think those are important, keeping that open dialogue. And as city council members, keeping your email inbox open, going to visit people, talk to them. All of those things are, they're vital to holding the seat. And I look forward to being representative.
Thank you, Councilman Blades. Second would be Councilman Rajaratnam, two minutes.
Ridgecrest citizens, most of you know me and my service to this community. I am proud to be in Ridgecrest, and I'm proud to be an American, and I always be a patriot. I was born to a dad who served in World War II. He was with Royal Air Force at that time, and he flew Spitfire. He taught us the values of life. He taught us respect for military. He taught us respect for the veterans. I stand for my faith. I stand for my service, commitment, community, and country. I strive for transparency, and I strive for accountability, strive for fiscal responsibility. And I want to be on the City Council as your representative. I want to work on your issues if you give me an opportunity. And we have done good job during the past four years. The City Council worked on improving the infrastructure, improving the public safety, improving the quality of life. And coming to quality of life, we have started building Pini Pool. That's a great addition to the quality of life on Ridgecrest. My children swim in the old swimming pool. I want my grandson to swim in the new one, which probably would be completed in '25 or '26. So I ask you for your oath, and I humbly request that. And if I am elected, I'll be on the council of the people, by the people, and for the people, as Abraham Lincoln has said. And again, thank you for giving me the opportunity previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes, Mr. Wicknick.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting this tonight. Well, I'm the new guy running against two incumbents. So now you got to decide, what are you going to do? You going to try and put the new guy in there? Why do I talk about new guys? Because I think new guys, and I don't mean that specifically guys, men and women, okay? They can bring new ideas to any kind of body, all right? I think we need some new ideas coming in here. Have you heard any new ideas from my friends here, the two incumbents, about what to do as far as where the city's going? No. If they actually answer the question, they're going to say, things are fine. We're going to keep going the same direction. Well, you know what? There comes a time when you need to have some new blood coming into an organization to get new ideas. And that's why we have term limits, to make it so we can change the representatives from time to time. They can serve eight consecutive years. Now, the council, there's been discussion about it, and they said the term limits has a flaw. Well, let me tell you, the Term Limits Initiative that we have does not have a flaw. It was written by election and initiative attorneys that wrote it. It was written specifically the way it is, and it works the way it is. It doesn't need to be changed. It doesn't need to go on the ballot. And both of these gentlemen here seem to think it's a good idea to put term limits on the next ballot. I don't. It's good the way it is. At the same time, when it comes to bringing up other ideas and listening to the people, another poll that was put out is that they asked a poll about Placer AI. And a lot of people came down here saying they didn't want to be tracked by this Placer AI. But the council seemed that it was a good idea, and we should do it anyway. And they did. And guess what? On that poll, the poll came back overwhelmingly against Placer AI. It needs to be dropped. It's a waste of money. I would appreciate your support for me, Tom Wicknick, for City Council.
Can I respond to one of the issues?
I want to give Councilman Blades 30 seconds to rebut.
So I think it's important that we speak about the issues at hand. That's what I think is important to say in my 30 seconds. I think that our response back to you, the public should be, how am I going to tackle things? We've spent for these last couple of years coming up with new ideas, being innovative, figuring out how to communicate, figuring out how to stretch dollars, and figuring out how to get things done, and I think that's important. I'm not speaking for Solomon, I speak for myself when I say that I'm proud. I'm very proud of the last few years.
Councilman Rajaratnam, 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. I want to make few comments on Placer AI. It's a wrong notion. People are thinking that Placer AI tracks individual data, their personal information. That is not true. Placer AI only tracks the GPS location of your cell phone. The reason we are getting Placer AI data is to have behavior data so that we can plan for things.
That was 30 seconds.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Do I get my final 30 seconds then? But I don't have 30 seconds to rebut them?
Thank you, candidates. Thank you to all who joined us here and viewed the forum online. We hope it was informative and helpful in determining how you decide to vote. Thank you, Scott and Chris, for co-moderating this event with me. Thank you to our hosts, the Ridgecrest Chamber of Commerce, the Ridgecrest Association of Realtors, and the Indian Wells Valley Economic Development Corporation. And a final thanks to the City of Ridgecrest for accommodating the forum by allowing us to use the City Council chambers and their audiovisual system. Be sure to stick around for the mayoral forum up next. This concludes the City Council candidate forum for tonight. Thank you.